To item three, update on homelessness services. Ms. Ferriall?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
You're gonna do this in less than half an hour, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No pressure.
So again, good morning. Jennifer Ferriall, Director of Housing and Community Development. And I have here with me Marcus Laws. He is our homeless services coordinator, and he will also be discussing some of the elements that we'll be discussing in our presentation. Again, I want to thank the Commission and the Mayor for giving us the opportunity to further discuss the city's efforts surrounding homelessness and our response to that issue. So as you know, Housing and Community Development's Division of Community Services is known as The Vickers House, and that location, which is located on Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, provides a one-stop location, offering a variety of different support services. One of them, and one of the ones that we primarily focus on, is homeless outreach and advocacy. Marcus will get into a little bit more detail in terms of what that entails, but we provide homeless outreach and advocacy. Housing placement, making sure that individuals who are in need of housing are placed. We have great relationships with numerous social service providers and with landlords who have the ability to assist us with making sure that we find adequate housing for individuals. Case management and referrals. While housing for the homeless is an issue in itself, one of the biggest concerns or things that we want to make sure that we're doing is to provide support services to those individuals. So whether that be, if needed, mental health services or substance abuse services, or making sure that they're referred to an outside organization to assist them with other needs, maybe even, you know, helping them get IDs or connecting them to other things that they need just to have, you know, regular day-to-day interactions. Obviously, mental health services, which I discussed. We assist individuals with resume development and job placement, so we have, again, connections with numerous providers who can assist us with finding employment. Obviously, that's a big aspect and something that we focus on. Tax services. SNAP and Medicaid partner site. DCF actually comes onsite to the Vickers House location and provides assistance to individuals to either sign up for food stamps or for Medicaid. And we also work with the Department of Corrections for community service sites. So they do community service hours within our location. We also help individuals who just exited the criminal justice system. We help them with connecting them to services. So what does our team look like? Currently in Housing and Community Development, we have a total of seven full-time equivalents dedicated 100% either to homeless services or homeless prevention services. That team is managed by Lisa Kemp, who is our Community Resource Manager, and she oversees all of the day-to-day operations out of the Vickers House. Marcus Laws, who is our homeless services coordinator, he pretty much is kind of that glue that brings everything together. He works with the different nonprofit, excuse me, nonprofit organizations. He works with the business community, with DDA, with just with the different type of providers out there to kind of bring it all together. Eric, Erica, and Cecilia, half of their time is allocated to actually doing on-street engagement. The other half is assisting individuals with first and last month's rent, making sure that they have the proper case management that they need, and making sure that they're connected to other services. I will add that both Lisa and Marcus also conduct a lot of outreach as needed, so I do want to add that they do that as well. And currently, we're in the process of hiring two homeless outreach specialists, which will be 100% dedicated to on-street services. So that, we're in the process of hiring two individuals to do that. In support of that, we have a contract with Mental Health America, and they provide two mental health providers to our team, 100% dedicated to providing services within West Palm Beach. I want to add that that is funded through community development block grant funds, so those are federal dollars. And the limitation with that is, we're only allowed to utilize 15% of our annual allocation. So it's really only about $140,000 and $130,000 that we can use for these types of social services. So we're limited in terms of what we can allocate for these kinds of contracts. And we have Shakela Hart. She is actually a licensed clinical social worker, and she is able to provide mental health assessments. She can Baker Act if needed. She can actually work with them on making sure that they get prescription meds, so that's a huge program that we're also working on. So we have a mental health professional on staff, and Jonathan Perez, he does additional outreach, housing placement. So when you total all of the FTEs, we have about nine FTEs, and also with the support of Jeremy Morse, who is the CEO of Mental Health America. I want to kind of touch on this picture here, and you will see, it kind of adds to the partnerships that we have with the police department. There was a call, the police was called due to, someone called indicating there was an issue with a homeless person, and he called our homeless outreach team, and we connected him with a licensed mental health professional, and they both went out there to respond to the call, which I think is a program that I would love to if we had resources in the future to further expand, so that our police officers can have a mental health professional go out with them when they're responding to these calls. And with that said, I'm going to introduce Marcus, who is going to just get into a little bit more detail on the outreach and the housing and how those programs are spearheaded.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Morning.
So our homeless outreach team is dedicated to providing on-street access to services for those who are experiencing homelessness. Our purpose is to identify, engage, and assess individuals who are in need, refer to those individuals, and make sure that they maintain their engagement, which comes to the point where we have to visit them on a weekly basis and make sure that they're following through on any other paperwork that may be needed, or any duties that we may have to follow through on in regards to their case. We also document our contacts and collect documentation as needed in order to further their housing placement. Here you'll see our current schedule for our outreach in the community. We have made adjustments due to feedback from the community as well as our own observations. So we are going out early in the morning time, starting at 7:30, and stagnating our time to allow us to go out in the evening as well. We continue to work towards making sure this schedule can be as effective as possible in order to meet the needs of the community, and we always welcome feedback. We currently do have CJE Security, who is in the parks in West Palm Beach, and what they do is they are allowed to go in, assess safety measures, make sure that there's no drugs or nefarious activity going on. They report to the police department if that happens. If they do come in contact with homeless individuals, they do report that to myself and to Lisa, and we take part to make sure that we follow up on those reports that we get from CJE Security. As part of our strategies for street outreach and engagement, we have begun collaborations with the county's hot team, as well as our partnership with Mental Health America, and we also continue to partner with The Lord's Place as well. We have weekly case conferencing and strategic planning meetings to assess what is happening on the streets, how we can be more effective, and how we communicate the needs of those we are serving. Our combined utilization of resource allocation allows us to look at the dollars we have available within our social service programs, as well as programs that are being provided by the county and other agencies who provide homeless services. And we seek to make sure that we're using our money as effectively, so if we're not able to support one individual through our programs, we do reach out to the county and other agencies for their utilization of funds. We've increased our collaboration of case management and data tracking, again, with our weekly case conferencing. This allows us to actually share what's happening on cases in real time and to come up with common solutions. Through those efforts, we're trying to establish uniform engagement practices to ensure that everyone is doing the same thing. At the same time, that increases our communication, it limits the possibility for bottlenecking in our system, and it also improves our ability to serve those who are experiencing homelessness. We've also begun marketing and community education efforts. I've met with a few of our neighborhood associations to get their feedback on how they view homeless circumstances in their neighborhoods to be able to provide a tempered response, and we look to increase those collaborations over the future. We'll be having our marketing rollout in the next couple of months?
Yes.
In the next couple of months, we all have our marketing rollout. Part of these strategies also include the utilization of the Baker Act for those with mental health and behavioral health concerns, and the Marchman Act to address those who have chronic substance use concerns. We are looking to help increase income through employment and education opportunities, and our newly implemented Homeless Activity Reporter has quickly become a tool that allows us to see what is happening in the community and to respond effectively. So the Activity Reporter is a web-based tool. It allows users, whether it be a community member or someone experiencing homelessness, to send in their information or report information to us, and we're able to work with our partners at Mental Health America, as well as with the county, to make sure that these issues are addressed in a timely fashion. We respond to these reports within 24 hours. If there's a phone number or email address that's available, we do reach out to the community who's making those reports. This is an example of our coordinated entry system, and this coordinated entry system is a best practice, as given by the National Alliance of Ending Homelessness. What it allows is for us to use our street outreach team as we find individuals who are experiencing homelessness. We are able to gather their information and to make referrals while we're accepting and prioritizing them based on the critical needs that they have. This feeds into our acuity list, which is a list of people that we have engaged with throughout the city and throughout the county who are experiencing homelessness in a chronic sense, meaning they've been homeless for one continuous year or multiple episodes of homelessness over a period of three years. This acuity list allows us to decipher whether or not we're able to help with their case and what that looks like, and what supportive service is going to be most effective for those individuals. Part of those housing program solutions that come out of our coordinated entry is permanent supportive housing, which is targeted towards chronically homeless individuals to allow them to move into housing with low barriers, and then we introduce services to them prior after they've been housed. So the priority is to make sure they're housed first and off the street, and that is part of their care plan. Our rental assistance program is continuous. It allows us to identify individuals who have difficulty maintaining employment or maintaining housing stability due to inability to maintain their funds. Our rental assistance is provided to them on a measured basis, and it's dependent on their income and their ability to maintain engagement with case management. Our eviction prevention program allows us to look at individuals who are facing eviction or three-day notice and to implement funding that is able to keep them into stable housing. We have housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, rapid rehousing, which is targeted towards individuals who have recently become homeless, and we suspect that through a quick means of allowing some funding to support them, they're able to quickly get on their feet and maintain employment and maintain housing after that with limited interaction from continued service venues. We also have mainstream HUD vouchers and HUD-BASH vouchers. Our HUD-BASH vouchers are specifically targeted towards our veterans who are experiencing homelessness within the county. When we look at our strategic partnerships, because we can't do it all by ourselves, we have Adopt a Family, who is the entry point for families experiencing homelessness. We have CJE Security, which is geared for safety in city parks and service coordination. We have our community partnerships, which is our shop program and our mental health services. That is run by community partners, and they, again, are someone who focuses on mental health and housing those with mental health and behavioral issues. Gulfstream Goodwill Industries is a major player for us. They are the homeless resource center for the county. They are a point of coordinated entry. They conduct supportive housing, and then they allow us to be able to shelter those who are in need of emergency shelter. Our Legal Aid Society provides access to legal services. We have The Lord's Place for homeless resources, Mental Health America for street engagement, access to mental and physical health services and medication. Our Palm Beach County Hot Team, that provides community services and coordination of services. PSC Security for downtown safety in Northwood and Entertainment Districts. St. Anne's Place, who is also an interest, St. Anne's Place is also an entry point for those experiencing homelessness. They connect with us on a regular basis and provide feedback to us on the growth that we are seeing in homeless population or the decline that we're seeing, and then they provide strategic partnerships when it comes to different funding. Yes. Jennifer also wanted me to mention how essential St. Anne's Place has been with us as a new and continuing partner. Historically, St. Anne's Place has been off to the side. They've had their own stream of funding, and they've not generally participated in a lot of activities that have gone on with the continuum of care. As of this recent year, they have begun to participate more heavily within the continuum of care. They now have access to our continuum's healthcare system, which is called ClientTrack, where we use it for data management and project management. They are entering that data on a regular basis, and they are working with The Vickers House and Mental Health America on a regular basis to produce services for those experiencing homelessness. Our Veterans Administration-
Hold on. Madam President has a question at this point.
Yes.
Thank you. Pardon the interruption, just while we're on the subject of St. Anne's Place. Throughout the north end, we've had a challenging relationship sometimes back and forth with St. Anne's Place as they try to address this continually growing issue. There are things that bleed into the neighborhoods that kind of encroach on private property along the residence of 20th Street, and I know Housing Community Development has worked closely to try to address those issues, but it is an ongoing problem for the neighborhoods. So could you talk a little bit about maybe this new formed relationship and how we're working together, the St. Anne's Place, to try to address the issues that spill over into our neighborhoods?
Sure. As you've noticed over the last couple of months, there's been a decrease in terms of the individuals who are, again, you know, kind of the overspill that we see after hours. And St. Anne has really done a great job at, you know, quite frankly say, look, you can't, you know, after hours, you've just got to make sure that you can't sleep here. They've been really essential in sometimes even denying services in the event that they saw anybody who was not really, you know, acting accordingly, or people that were, you know, doing specific activities on other properties. So they've been really helpful with that. I'll say it is a difficult task because they are an organization who's trying to help out homeless individuals, and when that organization, wherever they're located, you're going to attract the individuals to that location. But they're very, they're extremely helpful, and they understand, you know, the issues of the community and the surrounding community. And again, they have denied services to individuals who have, you know, engaged in activities that they shouldn't be engaging in. So they're a huge partner, and I'll say this, we are the only organization that is allowed on their site. The city of West Palm Beach and The Vickers House, we're the only ones who can actually go onsite and provide services and help them with their processes.
Sure, and thank you for that. And I know it's a complicated issue, and certainly, you know, St. Anne's is really trying to provide some very much needed services. You know, I think it comes down to that balance of neighborhood needs. You know, we have members of the public that are in here quite frequently with the same issues, and so not casting blame on everyone and understanding that it's a complicated issue. Have we ever approached St. Anne's about maybe helping to find them a location that's further away from residential neighborhoods so that we can make sure that we address the issues, but limit the problems that are encroaching on private residences around the area?
We have. I'm not sure that that's something that they're open to at the moment, but we have tried that approach in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
And I would just add to the point on St. Anne's. They have implemented security cameras to kind of catch the video of folks who are causing some adverse activities in that neighborhood, and they have been working closely with the neighbors and the businesses around there to try and mitigate some of those issues. But to continue, we also have Vita Nova as a strategic partner, who provides housing and community services for youth ages 18 to 24. Our Parks and Recreation Department provides safety and community events in our city parks. West Palm Beach Police Department provides safety, law enforcement, connection to community services. Our West Palm Beach Sanitation Department provides community cleanliness response. And a partner who is not listed but has been awesome is the Downtown Development Association. With all of these partnerships, for those who can participate, we have begun weekly meetings to ensure that we have open communication about how homelessness is affecting our agency and our departments at each end, and how we can work more collaboratively together in order to address these issues for the city.
Yeah, Commissioner Lambert has a question.
Just wanted to clarify what you said, Marcus. Thank you. Did you say that you have weekly meetings with these strategic partners?
Yes, ma'am. Minus a few, we do have a strategic partnership with the Sanitation Department, the Parks Department, St. Anne's Place, Mental Health America, Gulfstream Goodwill.
And what's the intent of those weekly meetings?
The intent of the weekly meetings is for us to increase communication and collaboration. We've noticed that communication is one thing that always affects whether or not we're able to be effective in our roles. So our goal is to make sure that we know what we're doing on the streets. So if we have services that we can provide, we share those services with those who attend this meeting, as well as Gulfstream Goodwill. If we need additional help from sanitation in a particular area, we want them to be notified. So the goal is that we increase our communication and we become more effective in what we do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Marcus. And of course, I want to highlight some of the accomplishments as a result of the efforts that have been ongoing over the last year. 363 individuals were serviced through the street engagement team, either through the city or The Lord's Place. I want to add before I continue that we've been really careful with data. One of the things that we want to make sure is that we're providing accurate data and that we have source documentation for all of this. So providing accurate data is something that we're highly focusing on. 133 individuals received mental health services with Mental Health America. 68 individuals were reconnected to a loved one through the city's Homebound Program. This is a program where we assist individuals to relocate to a loved one back home or in another location. We try to be very responsible with the program, where we will not send someone to another location unless there is someone who can accept them or take them in, so we verify that before we pay for someone to relocate. 10 individuals, I'm sorry, 61 individuals were placed into emergency shelter or housing. A lot of these numbers are a little bit low because of COVID, but we'll talk a little bit more about our response related to that. 10 homeless individuals were provided job readiness skills and training, and were able to seek and gain employment. And 188 responses were provided to residents who had used our new Homeless Activity Reporter app. Obviously, COVID threw a huge wrench for all of us, and, you know, while we were still able to maintain a certain level of services, none of our programs or our initiatives ever stopped. Not only that, but we also then had to create new programs and new partnerships and, you know, work with different organizations to be able to respond to COVID. So we were one of those departments that was really involved in working with the county to process applications for food voucher assistance. So 2,300 households in West Palm Beach received food vouchers. 1,400 received utility payments. 1,300 individuals received rental assistance or eviction prevention. 300 households received assistance with their mortgage. We were also assisting individuals to apply for food stamps and unemployment onsite. If you don't recall, there was a time where it was really difficult to utilize the unemployment and for individuals to sign up, so we put together a program where we were helping individuals to do that. And this was all with our existing staff. Our existing staff was either doing outreach, or they were in the office processing applications to support our residents with these efforts. I will leave this, Mayor, because I want to promise you to be done in less than 30 minutes. I had a video that I wanted to share, but I can email that to all of you. And that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to further assist.
Well, let me make a comment, and thank you for that very in-depth presentation. And thank you, Ms. Ferriall, for you and your department for really addressing the homeless situation in a comprehensive manner. You know, it just irks me that we, as a city, we as a legislative body, will come under attack from those who have read a proposal to suggest that we, as a city, are insensitive to the plight of the homeless and that we're criminalizing homelessness. Nothing could be further from the truth, and I tell you what, I will hold up the efforts as described here by your department and the city of West Palm Beach against any other municipality in this county and maybe even beyond in terms of what we are doing to address the homeless situation. Listen, it's not a West Palm Beach problem. It is not a Palm Beach County problem. This is a national problem, and we're doing what we can, but there is a balance that has to be struck between a quality of life that our citizens deserve and what we are doing in this area. And I think we're striking that balance very well. Now, listen, there's more work to be done, but we also, as a city, are getting a number of affordable and workforce units there out. You know, the cure to homelessness is obviously putting everyone in homes, and so we're working on providing transitional housing. But again, I will hold up our efforts, as described here, against any other municipality, and I dare anyone to come and criticize us as a city because we are not doing anything for the homelessness. That is an absolute despicable mischaracterization of the truth. I could have said something else, but anyway. So thank you again for your efforts, and I appreciate this presentation. And Commissioners, any questions? Yes, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you to your team for the outreach that you're doing. I know that I have used the app. I have had residents use the app and tell me about it, and you all have always been very responsive, not only in reaching out to them, but then following up with us to let us know the results, and I just want to say thank you for that. I also heard a story from the Mental Health Association that they had an individual who's who came in with their spouse and made the very hard decision that the one needed to be Baker acted. And when they called for the police to assist in that process, as is the policy and procedure, it was reported that the police handled it with much care and the delicacy, the delicate nature that's needed in handling those situations. So I do think that the training is working and those partnerships are working, so thank you for that. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about our, the contract that we used to have with The Lord's Place and that we no longer have, because I know we heard that mentioned recently in some of the comments from the public, and I certainly respect and see all of the outreach that we're doing internally now as a city, but can you talk a little bit about why we're not in contract with The Lord's Place specifically?
Well, I have to be honest, it was a very difficult decision to make, and it was a very difficult budget process for us. And, you know, Housing and Community Development, I want to say, over 90% of our budget is staff, right? Our general fund budget, let me clarify. Our general fund budget is used to cover staff. So when budget cuts and considerations needed to be looked at, the only other general fund contract that we had was a contract with this organization that was, you know, in X-Y dollar amounts, right? And so this was the most cost-effective way for us to make sure that our staff wasn't laid off. We didn't want to lay off our team, and because of, you know, the tight budget considerations that we had to make, it was either looking at ways to get creative internally or lay off some of our staff just to keep the contract. So that's really kind of what, you know, what we looked at and how we try to measure the whole situation.
And I can appreciate that we want to keep our staff on, but I think we also want to make sure we're providing the best services. So, you know, I heard you talk a lot about all of the outreach strategies and all of the partners that we're utilizing, and The Lord's Place was still listed among those, I believe.
Absolutely.
So can you speak to that a little bit more about how are we ensuring that we're staying up to date with the most current practices, that, you know, an organization that is their sole mission is to focus on that? How are we, an organization that has 100 different priorities, able to make sure that we're still providing the highest level service possible?
Well, you know, I have always believed that partnerships are more than just, you know, a situation where we provide funding. You can still partner with any organization in different ways, right, and still, you know, have them at the table. They're still at the table. We still communicate with them on a, you know, daily, weekly basis. We work with all the other organizations that we've outlined. You know, we have staff who has been, this is their bread and butter. We have actually staff who was hired or was at The Lord's Place at some point. You know, we have internal expertise that we're utilizing for these services. And again, The Lord's Place is still- And again, the Lord's Place is still their partner to us. The county's a partner, Gulfstream Goodwill, St. Anne. I can't tell you one homeless service organization that we're not a partner of, and we're actually leaders at the table. As the mayor stated, we're the only municipality other than the county that has this level of response to homelessness. The only other that I could think of has one FTE, and that's in the police department that assists with homelessness. So other than the county, we really are the only ones providing these services. And I will stand here and tell you that the team that we just outlined, they are just as qualified and up to date on providing these services than anybody else. And I stand behind that. And again, the Lord's Place will always continue to be a partner, and we will always continue to look for ways in which we can, you know, fund them in future circumstances or look for housing opportunities to work with them on. So I want to clarify that. I mean, they're a partner to us, and unfortunately, we're just in a trying time where it was either our staff or another, or something else, so.
Jennifer, you, Ms. Ferriello, you're being very, very diplomatic, and I certainly appreciate that. I am confident, Commissioner, that we will be able to provide these services at or in excess of the level that was previously provided. That's the kind of confidence I have that the team we put together can do this job and do it very, very well. You know, the Lord's Place is not the exclusive expert when it comes to how to interact with the homeless. And listen, we have, in Marcus, a homeless outreach coordinator. That is his job. That's not his, that's not an ancillary thing. That is his job. And so he is tasked with understanding what best practices are. So I am quite confident, under Ms. Ferriello's leadership, under Marcus' leadership, that we will be able to provide the same services at or in excess of the quality that we were getting from the Lord's Place. And if you're looking at city government, you want the biggest bang for your buck. And we made the decision internally that we could do this job, we could do it very effectively for a lower cost. I will say that. You can say that. I will say that.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some other follow-up.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about, you mentioned in the stats, and thank you so much for letting us know how careful you are with those statistics. You mentioned 61 individuals placed in emergency housing. Can you talk a little bit about what our emergency housing options look like?
Sure. I'll have Marcus answer that question.
Okay. So for emergency housing options, we look at a variety of things. Palm Beach County has no true emergency housing, to be frank and honest. The way our emergency housing comes about is through our coordinated entry process where we identify those who are most in need. We utilize the Lewis Center, as well as the Annex and a new facility that is being built out in Belle Glade and Pahokee area. Those are our points for emergency housing, and it is based on the level of need vulnerability that a person has on a case-by-case, and then the availability of the beds that the Lewis Center has. I believe they are able to house about 65 at the Lewis Center at a given time, and then at the Annex, it's around 125.
Thank you. And just so I'm clear that we're using the same definition, an emergency housing situation would be someone, a city staff or a police officer comes across someone who's homeless, who's sleeping in a place, you know, that they shouldn't be, and they are able to place them in emergency housing that evening?
Yes, yes. The police can, the police can do a drop-off to the Lewis Center, and that person can be placed that evening. And then as far as additional emergency housing, we would be looking at motel and hotel vouchers that are provided on a case-by-case and by various agencies.
And so the motel hotel option vouchers, we partner with other agencies that have that ability, and so we work with them to provide housing, you know, within hours of coming upon an individual who would need this.
Yes, ma'am.
And I also want to add, there are some other alternatives that we're also exploring. We have some exciting things that I don't really want to give away, but we're looking at some other things that we can utilize for overnight shelter. Again, we have used hotels or motels to shelter individuals. We have also, Mayor, part of your 303, we have Dr. Alice Moore, who is a supportive housing project. We also had Home at Tamarind, another supportive housing project. And we're actually looking at a, there's a project in which we were able to make that connection. There's a site on Tamarind that was just redeveloped. It's 20 units of housing, but can actually house 36 individuals. And South Florida Behavioral Health Network, MHA, and Neighborhood, no, the Partners, Neighborhood, Community Partners, I'm sorry. They are actually taking over that space, and we're going to be able to do emergency housing and transitional housing on those sites as well, so that we're going to do a ribbon cutting for that mayor in the next couple of weeks. So there's a lot of supportive housing, and it's not just a matter of, when we're talking about the chronically homeless, it's not just finding housing. It is giving them the support services that they need, and they're going to need a lot of that because when you're looking at those who have been on the streets for extensive periods of time, there's oftentimes an underlying condition, which is either a mental health or a substance abuse issue. And you need to be able to give someone those services before they can, you know, really go off on their own, if they ever go off on their own. So we're prioritizing that as well.
Do you have a follow-up?
Just to say thank you so much. Not only, you know, thank you for doing the work, thank you for educating us on this, but thank you for educating the community on this, because I know anybody who I've put you in touch with who, you know, to the mayor's comments before are saying, you know, we're not doing enough. You've always taken the time to meet with them, to give them a tour, and I really appreciate that because I think half the battle is the communication and education of the services we provide.
Sure, thank you.
Real quick, Jennifer, what is the latest count? I know every year we do a, what they call a point-in-time account on homelessness in our streets. Have we done one recently? What was the?
Not as of yet, no, yes, sir.
Probably because of, the other thing I do want to point out is presumably the services that we were, you were providing in this area continued during COVID, right? You didn't like go home and shut the, shut the, put up the clothes for business sign, right? Thank you. I mean, and again, these are people who are on the front line. We often hear about, you know, our first responders, and we certainly appreciate everything that they're doing. But the point I'm trying to make is we have other city employees who are also on the front line, who continue to do their job during this pandemic. And I don't think enough of that gets publicized, and I'm doing what I can. So thank you, thank you, thank you for, even in the midst of a pandemic, continuing to provide these services to our homeless neighbors. Okay, anything else?